Welcome, everyone. Tonight's meeting of Greenville City Council. Nice to have you with us. Please rise for invocation by Councilmember Fleming, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear kind and gracious God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the sunshine and the beauty. In terms of healing, we pray for actually healing of our nation, as well as our country and the world. We ask a special blessing upon those who stand in harm's way as a storm leads toward our shores. We ask you give us mercy and grace and please be kind to those and help us to be able to keep people safe from harm's way. We ask you with our employees and our staff members and help them to be able to serve with honor and dignity, particularly our firemen and our police officers. We thank you for their service and we thank you for keeping them safe thus far this year. We ask that you be with each of us as we do what we're supposed to do as elected officials to serve this community. We thank you for all you have done for us and all we know you will do. These blessings we ask in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
One nation under God, in the Father, and on earth as one.
Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember John DeWorke. Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brisington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here. You have the minutes of September 12th, which will stand approved as submitted unless there are any objections or corrections. Seeing none, we have no one who's signed up to speak to us tonight. We have a presentation 8A. Brandon Metten, I believe you're making the introduction. Thank you.
Mayor White, members of council, want to take a moment to introduce Oak Valley Group. They are taking over the management of the convention center. So Sam Hines with their management leadership team is here and would like to share a few words with you.
Okay, thank you. No, thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, city manager. Appreciate the opportunity to meet all of you all. We are very excited about the faith that you put into us to manage your convention center starting a week from Saturday. Just want to assure you that we've had a team of people in working over the last six weeks getting ready for this. It's interesting that our first event will be the biggest event of the year in the building, but we've met with all the TD Synx executives. We've met with Velda and her team on numerous occasions and we're all set and ready to go. We'll have a team of about 25 people coming in from around the country with our company to supplement the great staff that's already at the convention center. So we believe in this market. We think that the convention center has some good years ahead of it. We're going to really focus hard on short-term sales, working closely with Visit Greenville SC to really build up the business and we think there's a good future ahead. We plan on making some investments into digital signage, food and beverage equipment, anything that we can do to help sell the building and make it look a little bit more modern and current. We feel like there's a really good future out there for it. We've had a chance to spend a few years in the city already. We've had a partnership with the arena district at Bon Secours Wellness Arena for about three years now. We've helped them bring in shows such as Eagles, Bon Jovi, a few more that'll be announced in the next couple of months. So we really love being here. We are the fastest growing company in our business. We have about 300 venues that we operate. A little bit different from other people in our field, we actually invest money in the venues that we operate and like to do so on a pretty regular basis and we see a lot of good things here. On a personal note, my mother was born and raised here. And Mr. Mayor, you actually came to one wing of my family's family reunion about 15 years ago, Doc Morgan.
Yeah.
And we're gonna...
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's fun coming back here. We have, a lot of us have personal stakes in the community. We have a great city and we really look forward to being your partner for a long time.
What's your event coming up that you said was the largest event?
TD Synx.
Share the magic.
TD Synx.
Oh, of course, yeah.
Yeah. So we'll start a week from...
They're not a very demanding group either.
Right.
Anything goes.
I trust, you can trust that we've had a lot of meetings with them.
Yeah, I can imagine. That's baptism of fire. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to working with you.
Do you have consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second, clerk, call the roll on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brisington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Moving to regular agenda, we have a series of extremely important, significant annexations. So I guess Shannon LaBrenne get to lead us off on these. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. And just for knowledge, I think 14A was deferred, not so everybody is aware. And we'll move right into, I mean, sorry, 15A, pardon me. And we'll move right, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm gonna, we'll skip over 15A because it has been deferred.
15A is deferred, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, sir, you're fine.
So excited about the annexation, I'm not quite sure.
15B, an ordinance to annex approximately 29.14 acres of real property and 6.603 acres of adjacent right-of-way located at East Bramlett Street, Reedy Street, East Center Street, Power Street, Peace Street, West Washington Street, and Hampton Avenue Extension, and to provide the zoning designation of I-1 Industrial District and R-6 Single Family Residential District.
Motion approved.
Motion and a second.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council, good evening. I'm pleased to present the first of three annexations to you this evening. This property is owned by Duke Energy situated along the Reedy River and the Swamp Rabbit Trail between East Bramlett Road and Hampton Avenue. The city worked closely with Duke on this annexation. I would like to thank Linda Hannan and her team for working with us on this effort and they are present this evening. The annexation includes 10 parcels totaling 29.19 acres plus 6.6 acres of right-of-way. The property would be assigned in R-6 and I-1 industrial zoning classifications. These projects would become part of Council District 2. As a note, this property provides continuity to parcels that may be annexed in the future as well as the Riverside Apartments, which is item 15D on this evening's agenda. And Planning Commission recommended in favor of this annexation and rezoning by a vote of five to zero. This is a project that we've been working on for, I would say, several years to get here to this point this evening, and I'm proud to present this item for your consideration.
Second.
Thank you very much and thank you, Linda, to your whole team for patiently working with us all these many years and great, great relationship we have with y'all. We really appreciate it. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brisington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Okay, 15C.
An ordinance to annex approximately 3.89 acres of real property and 1.19 acres of adjacent right-of-way located at Churchill Circle and to provide the zoning designation of C-3 Regional Commercial District.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. This annexation is located on Malden Road and is owned by the Conisty Foundation. The annexation consists of 3.89 acres of property and 1.19 acres of right-of-way. The property is currently zoned C-2 in Greenville County and is proposed as C-3 in the city. If you recall, staff has presented several other annexations for property owned by the Conisty Foundation earlier this summer. The applicant postponed this request to consider for future development perspectives on the property. The adjacent city zoning is S-1. There were no concerns expressed regarding the C-3 zoning at the neighborhood meeting or the Planning Commission public hearing. Planning Commission voted in favor of this annexation and rezoning by a vote to seven to zero. And we would like to thank the Conisty Foundation for their work and partnership with the city as we cleaned up to bring in all of their parcels into the city, and this should complete those requests. Thank you.
All standing. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brisington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
May I make a comment?
Mm-hmm.
If any of you have not had the opportunity to go out to the Conisty area to look at what they have done in cleaning up and the nature trail, if you have children or if you just like to walk yourself and see birds and all of the above, you need to go. It is one of the most beautiful facilities right in our own backyard and it doesn't cost you a million bucks to go there. You just take it and it has some wonderful trails and wonderful things for our young people to see and learn, and it has fresh air. I repeat, fresh air. It's wonderful. It's beautiful. Oh, it's got, oh, it's got dog park. I miss that, but anyway. Thank you, thank you so much.
15D.
An ordinance to annex approximately 9.156 acres of real property and 0.617 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at 1121 S. Sally Circle and to provide the zoning designation of FRD, Flexible Revenue Review District.
Excuse me.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This annexation is located on Sally Circle Road, which connects the Hampton Avenue Extension. The annexation consists of 9.156 acres of property and was recently developed in Greenville County as the Riverside Apartments. You can catch a glimpse of the apartments from the Swamp Rabbit Trail just south of the Swamp Rabbit Cafe from this location. The property is currently zoned FRD in Greenville County. The petition proposes keeping the FRD zoning and adopting the FRD plan from the county. Riverside Apartments contains approximately 210 units. The FRD zoning is proposed because the maximum density for a standard zoning district in the city is 20 units per acre. The applicant did not want their new project to exceed density and become non-conforming in the city, hence staff supported keeping the FRD zoning. As mentioned, this annexation is only possible with the continuity established by the Duke annexation approved on first reading a few moments ago. Planning Commission recommended in favor of this annexation and the FRD zoning by a vote of six to zero.
What you mentioned, property taxes and business licenses is likely to generate. Just curious, there's a nice example, when you do apartments, we get pretty good business license.
I don't think we know right offhand, Mayor, but we can provide that information at second reading.
Good, noble thing. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brisington.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
Mayor, and if I may, just take a moment to share a brief update on our annexation activities, if that would be acceptable to you at this time. Since the mayor and council placed a heightened emphasis on annexation last summer and asked planning staff to take a leading role in the process, I'm pleased to announce that 22 annexations have received final approval by city council. That's more than 105 acres of real property and right-of-way that has been added to our city limits. Moreover, there are more than 14 petitions, including the three that received first reading tonight, currently going through the process that comprise an additional 107 total acres. Numerous others are in the works, and this goes to one of your top five priorities that you set for staff last year. So I thought you would just like a few of the data numbers. Our team also has removed barriers to the annexation process, and there's several things that we've done to include that. And then also, we are working with our legal department on some ordinance changes that would make annexation easier for those who wish to accomplish so in the future, and that will be coming before you probably in November. So I just thought I would take a chance, if that's okay, to just share an update on our annexation efforts.
Yeah, always brag about yourself, honey, let it go.
Well, I'm bragging about our team. The real heroes in this are Austin Rutherford and Michael Frickson and John Hamlet and the entire planning department. I just get to speak on their behalf.
Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
That's the most annexations since, especially with the Duke one tonight, since the millennial, and say we crossed I-85, Clemson I-Car, Millennial Campus, and Green Ridge Shopping Mall, all annexed many years back. And Brandon wasn't in Malden at the time, he would have, or perhaps, he didn't stop us, but he jumped right over Interstate 85.
Yeah, just...
But that was, we worked with Clemson.
Shannon might correct me, but I believe this is more annexations than we've done in total in the last 15 years.
Probably so.
Well, at least since...
Eleven...
That's when we did them, yeah, Green Ridge and I-Car. Okay, 15E.
An ordinance to appropriate 1,880,000 in the Utility Underground Fund for the Unity Park Phase 2 Undergrounding Project.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Mayor and members of council, the appropriation before you tonight is for us to complete the undergrounding along South Hudson Street. This is what we refer to as Phase 2A, and it's kind of shown on the drawing there as a Phase 2A and a 2B. This is the funding for that entire Phase 2, 2A and 2B. It's shown, essentially it gets you the undergrounding from Welburn Street up to the railroad tracks there near Markley Street and Hudson. If you recall, we came to you back in January and did an initial appropriation for the Phase 2A area, which Unity Park was nearing the opening day, and we wanted to do as much of the work that we could do to kind of clear out of the way of Unity Park and get out of that Michelin Green era, area and get under the river. We knew that was going to be, you know, we just didn't want to have heavy construction equipment there. And at the time, we were looking at a pretty elaborate construction operation of jacking and boring under the river, getting across the river. We were able to actually do some more directional drilling and ease that construction method. But we came back in January and appropriated a portion of the money to do Phase 2, and this appropriation tonight will allow us to complete all of Phase 2 up to the railroad line. This gets you the last, this will get us the last 500 feet of duct bank that has to be installed between Mayberry Street and the railroad line, and then this also gets all of Duke's electrical work as well as the undergrounding of the communication lines.
This is that last piece of Phase 2. Okay, Tabernacle Church and...
Yes, sir. Took us a little while to work through, there were some design issues. We had to get a right-of-way easement from Tabernacle Baptist Church. There was also some pretty extensive utilities to be coordinated around. There's a very large water line there in Hudson Street, and just working through those utility, the coordination and the right-of-way agreements took us a little longer to get the design done, but we're glad to be under, through the design, ready to start construction on this, and I know Duke is gearing up to come right behind us with their work.
So this was, and then all that will be left after this is Mayberry Street, Phase 3. And, you know, I'm not sure what we appropriated in January towards 2 to get us that jump start, but at one point, Phase 2 was estimated at 2.7 million.
It was between 2.7 and 2.9.
Okay, so now you're saying in total it's 1.8, 1.88, right?
Plus...
Plus what we did in January.
Plus the 1.16.
Okay, so, so with that, but 790 of that is, is on Duke, right? Let me, let me say what I'm getting at, and then maybe that'll help answer if there's even a question. Is there a surplus from what we budgeted, which was 2.7, to what we know it's going to be now?
So when taken in concert with the January appropriation, which was about 1.16 million, we're still at about that $2.7 million number total for Phase 2A and 2B.
Okay, so we're right where we thought we'd be.
Yes, ma'am.
And then Phase 3, does anybody remember what Phase 3 is estimated at?
I don't...
I don't know that we've had a number on that, have we?
We're under design with that right now. We'll have that designed by the end of the year. Duke's already been looking at our design. I think we're estimating around 1.5 along Mayberry Street, but that was an early estimate that was done.
And this Phase 2 is about how many feet, Clint?
About 1,500 feet from Welburn up to the railroad. We're averaging about $2,000 a foot on duct bank now. Very expensive.
We'll soon be, we'll soon be addressing the RFP for Mayberry Street to see what's out there in terms of redevelopment of Mayberry, which of course will be kind of like our own version of County Square, I guess, our prime real estate. And the infrastructure cost, I think we'll be looking at that, trying to look at infrastructure costs being rolled into that.
But this is running, Phase 2 is running more than what we typically see things running. Somehow I have that, normally we get about 3/4 of a mile for a million bucks. So this is almost 3 million, we should be getting, I mean, this is expensive work given...
The cost of going up, I mean, we, we used to average about $1,500 a foot five years ago, and now we're at $2,000.
But it includes electrical work, does it not?
Includes all the electrical work as well as the communication lines, relocating AT&amp;T, Charter.
Oh, yeah, so it's going to cost us more.
Do we, and do we think, I mean, I'm hoping Mayberry might be a little bit less than, because we're not crossing a river.
Not crossing a river. We're really not crossing any roads, for that matter. It's all along the shore.
It's all on...
It's interesting, we got, we got to work with Duke on this, but there's really not a lot being served right now. We know there's a lot coming to Mayberry Street, and we got to, Duke has to plan accordingly for that, but we do expect Mayberry Street to be cheaper, less...
Less expensive.
Less expensive.
It's a fairly simple line out there now.
Okay, all right, thanks, I appreciate it.
Okay, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brisington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 16A.
An ordinance to approve an easement in favor of Duke Energy Carolina's LLC for the purpose of undergrounding utilities on property located on South Hudson Street.
So moved.
Second, this 15F, isn't it?
That's the same.
Okay, excuse me.
Do you need anything?
This is just the easement that goes with the new duct bank.
Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brisington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Now 16A.
A resolution to appoint the City of Greenville poet laureate for a two-year term beginning October 1, 2022.
Come up, and here, if you don't speak an iambic pentameter, I'm really...
May I have a, may I have a motion in a second, Glenn?
So moved.
In a second, thank you.
Perhaps a haiku to get us started.
Right up.
Good evening, I'm pleased to be here tonight as we share the recommendation from the Arts and Public Places Commission for the city's first poet laureate. Just a quick run-through of the position qualifications and the selection criteria. The person, the applicant had to be a resident of Greenville County, 18 years of age or older, an active poet with a well-established body of published and/or unpublished work, comfortable with public speaking, and having a demonstrated history of involvement in the community. The timeline was as follows, so we opened, we actually established the poet laureate and youth poet laureate positions, and I know a lot of you were involved with that process as well, and we appreciate you bringing that to our attention. The month of July, the application was open, and we had a total of 18 candidates, which was phenomenal. And then on September 9th, the Arts and Public, Arts and Public Places Commission reviewed the applications in a publicly posted meeting, and they unanimously recommended Glennis Redman for appointment on, yes. She would begin her term on October 1st of this year, and then on January 1st, we would open the application for our first youth poet laureate.
Wonderful.
And so now, we've worked with our communications department on a short little video.
By the sprawl of green grass unfurling like a blanket. Glennis Redman, her words have helped people celebrate.
Every time I hear Kings speak.
And commemorate.
I feel a rumble.
Now, the City of Greenville Art and Public Places Commission has chosen her as the first city poet laureate. The poet laureate is an honorary position aimed at promoting literacy and literature among city residents of all ages. As an award-winning poet and teaching artist, Glennis Redman is up for the task.
These stories are useful things.
Well, I'm so excited that our community is supporting poetry on this broad level because I've been doing this work for 28 years across the country, and it's wonderful that in my own hometown that I can reach others through this platform.
Redman started writing poetry when she was 13, beginning in Woodmont High School and at her church, Bethlehem Baptist. She received South Carolina's highest award for the arts, the Governor's Award. She's also a Kennedy Center teaching artist and a Cave Canum poet.
I believe poetry belongs to everyone, and I consider myself, like Carl Sandburg, a poet of the people. And I believe that everyone has a story to tell, and that's part of my mission is to make sure people tell their stories. I don't want to make people poets, but I want them to find the poetry in their lives.
As city poet laureate, she will serve a two-year term, being asked to read poetry and speak at public meetings, public venues, neighborhoods, community centers, schools, and other public settings throughout the city of Greenville.
For us to come together in nature, let this wish of unity help us rise to our highest nature.
She'll also help usher in the youth poet laureate.
I know we got the right person out there, young people out there, who wants to stand and have a platform, not just to have a spotlight on them, because I tell my students, you know, don't strive to be in the limelight, but be the light. Poetry is for everyone.
I'm Lauren Thomas for the City of Greenville.
Is Glennis, is Glennis on the line?
She is, she could, unfortunately, she was traveling to see family, but she is on, I believe, virtually.
Glennis, she's... Oh! Glennis?
Hello, everyone.
Hi. Hello, Greenville poet, Lauren.
We are so proud of you, proud to make this...
Thank you, Mayor Knox White. I just wanted to tell you all that I'm logging in from Austin, Texas, just had a new grand girl. This is my third grandchild, second grand girl, but I promise I will be coming back to Greenville on Wednesday.
Okay.
Even though much of my heart is here, but you know, I am ready to get home and get started and be closer to home as far as family and poetry is concerned. So I want to thank the city council and Mayor Knox White and Arts and Public Places, all of you who are creating this platform, not just for me as the inaugural city of Greenville poet laureate, but for people to come in the future to tell our stories in Greenville through poetry.
Well, and Glenn?
Congratulations.
From my, from my perspective, this is Russell, from my perspective, there's no better choice than, than you as poet laureate, and it's a real gift, so thank you.
Well, thank you all for what you do. Thank you, Russell, I appreciate that. And now I can tell my mom there's a reason why I was always talking. It was to, to this moment.
Congratulations on your grandchild, too.
Oh, thank you. We have a grand girl, her name is Quinn Farman. She came in on September 15th. I got the call from Tracy Ramzer right after that.
All right.
While I was sitting in the hospital, so an auspicious day all around.
Wow.
All right.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, Alon, for that great presentation. Brett.
And thanks to the Arts and Public Places in the park and Recreation Committee for making it possible. That's a wonderful thing.
Keep working on it, Shannon, it'll be another time.
Shannon's gonna give me a run for my money. I got it.
Okay.
Oh, yes it is, you keep saying over and over again. Planning is fun.
Manager, you got anything?
Mayor, mayor, for the record, we received the motion in a second, but we have not taken a vote yet.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
We just got carried away. Hey, Mr. Manager, you got anything you want to?
Couple, couple things, Mayor. It's always my pleasure to follow Glennis, too.
You've done that, you've done that before.
Third time this year I've got a chance to follow her.
That's true.
I want to recognize a few folks on our staff. I think I sent you all a note on Friday about our 50-50 match with the Greenville Legislative Delegation Transportation Committee on C-Funds. It's a huge acceleration of our program, our seven-year program is probably going to be cut in half. It's going to allow us to pave 26 miles of resurfacing in the next year plus, I think, 92 streets. So that should be exciting for everybody. In Greenville, we're making a real dent in that. So I want to thank Clint, Nick and Christie for your great work on that. Appreciate it.
I don't know if that's a record, but it's a, it's a great, it's a great number. It really helps us accelerate. Thanks. Also want to recognize Tara and Will and their team. They brought home some hardware from the International Festival and Event Convention. They were in McAllen, Texas, some of that team recently and won three awards. So congratulations to you all. Had a great Next Venture Summit. Those of you that are able to attend that, appreciate the ongoing support there. We had 30 great pitches. We had a great VIP night at the Greenville Drive Innovation hosted by Craig a few weeks ago. They shortlisted that to 10 and those 10 had an opportunity to pitch and I understand it was just off the charts, just a fantastic event. So represented Greenville well and we continue on our upward trend in innovation and entrepreneurship. Good news, the SRT Bridges, one was placed at Haywood Road. If you've been through there, that's great, looking good. And I'm told that Lawrence Road is imminent here in the next several days. So hopefully the weather will cooperate on that. We'll see that bridge span go over Lawrence Road, which would be a great addition. And we'll be close to having our part of that project done. We'll be looking to the county to do their part to get this thing done by the, the end of the year. I know I saw a lot of you had a great ribbon cutting at the Bohemian, fantastic celebration a little over a week ago. Great addition to our hotel stock downtown. So we're very fortunate to have the Bohemian here. I think it represents Greenville well. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Nothing else there? You can adjourn.
6:01 PM.